Good evening, and I'd like to call the March 20, 2019 Board Meeting to order. Remind everyone to please use your microphones when speaking and turn them off when finished. Thank you. I apologize for starting a few minutes late tonight, but we will get right to business. Commissioners present are Commissioner Sanders, Commissioner Schmidt, Commissioner Duggan, Commissioner Doane, and myself, Commissioner Bagnall. First item is reports by the Chief Executive Officer and Management Staff.
Good evening, President Bagnall, members of the Board. Happy first day of spring. We will start with a Safety Minute, as we always do, and this evening Pete Boone, Water Operations Division Manager, will present the Safety Minute.
So this evening, we're going to talk about drone safety. So the first thing you want to do in order to safely operate your drone is make sure that it's properly registered with the FAA, and you can find out information on their website about how to do that. Next, you want to make sure you only fly in open areas where you're not at risk of hitting a building or a tree or something that could be damaged. Keep your drone inside at all times, so visual contact with that, so you can maintain proper control. Don't fly it above people or anything that you wouldn't want your drone to crash into. Don't fly if you're not fit to drive, so no drinking and droning. Now, this is a really big one, so obviously stay away from other aircraft, and this is a big fear of anyone that flies an airplane, especially commercial pilots, because even a small drone could impact a plane and damage it. And lastly, stay below 400 feet. This is one of the rules about operating drones. We've all seen a lot of expansion in the use of drones recently and lots of different uses for those, and I thought this one was particularly unique. When I went looking for a good photo of a drone, when I first saw this, I thought that a drone had been carrying something and had crashed into power lines and caught on fire. Actually, what this is, is something got caught on the power lines. It's a piece of plastic netting, and this drone is equipped with a flamethrower, and so they flew it up there to use it to burn off the netting, so that they didn't have to try to get a person up there to do the same thing, and it was successful.
Wow.
So, thank you.
Pretty cool.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Pete. I want one of those bad boys.
The flamethrower, the drone.
Flamethrower drone, yeah. You just can't operate it when you've been drinking, so. Provide a quick monthly update in terms of Portland's crypto-spiridium results. So, once again, the City of Portland has reported crypto-spiridium OOCs were detected in water samples collected from the Bull Run headworks in the past month. Crypto-OOCs have been detected on February 25th, 27th, March 4th, March 11th, and March 12th, so far this month. And once again, the Oregon Health Authority has determined that the public does not need to take additional precautions at this time. And finally, I would refer any interested customers to the City of Portland Water Bureau website for full results. Portland has been in the news quite a bit the last few days. Portland experienced a catastrophic main break over the weekend. That main break occurred in northeast Portland on Saturday. The main was reported to be a 30-inch diameter cast iron pipe that was installed in about 1915, which makes it, by my calculation, about 104 years old. As reported, the main break resulted in millions of gallons of water flooding neighborhood streets and resulted in an extended power outage to more than 10,000 homes and businesses. A Water Bureau spokesperson noted that it took crews several hours to stop the flow of water since, quote, "Some of those valves haven't been shut in decades and were difficult to shut." Probably not what I would have said, but that is what it is. We know that main breaks do happen, including breaks on large transmission mains, and we feel bad for the residents of northeast Portland who were affected by this event. But I'm also pleased to report that we've learned a lot about pipeline design and pipeline maintenance over the past century. For example, the new Willamette Water Supply System Pipeline uses a significantly different design than the rigid cast iron pipe that broke in northeast Portland over the weekend. The Willamette Transmission Line is a heavy-walled steel pipe that is designed to accommodate movement of the surrounding soil, including movements up to and associated with a magnitude nine earthquake, so a very different design criteria than a rigid pipe. In addition, TVWD, for the last couple of decades, has conducted a comprehensive valve maintenance program that includes routine exercises of all valves, including valves on large transmission lines, so their operation is checked every four to five years. While these types of investments in different designs and different maintenance practices aren't cheap, the fact of the matter is, we think they're essential in keeping the water system operating smoothly and limiting the impacts to our customers when the unexpected does happen. A separate piece of what I think is just exceptional good news, earlier this month, we received a letter from the Oregon Health Authority. I've included the letter in your packets. That letter acknowledges determination that the TVWD's 2018 master plan is in conformance with all applicable requirements of the Oregon Administrative Rules. That is a major accomplishment, and I wanted to particularly thank Carrie Pack and Nick Augustus of our engineering team, because they were largely responsible for that work. That latest update was essentially done almost entirely in-house, except for a little bit of hydraulic modeling that was contracted out, and it's a reflection of the high quality of work Carrie and her team have been doing over the last several years now. Thank you, Carrie. Finally, TVWD is going to receive, we haven't received them yet, but we are told we are going to receive two communication awards from the Pacific Northwest Section of AWWA. One award is for the winter weather preparedness video that was prepared last year, the Game of Seasons, and the second award is for communications related to TVWD's cross-connection control program and the GOLD Plan. The awards will be presented at the Northwest Section Annual Conference on May 3 in Vancouver, and congratulations to Andrea and her communications team for the awesome work that they've been doing. And finally, with that, I'll turn it back over to Pete Boone, who will present the Water District's Department Report this evening.
Hate it when that happens. So, tonight, we're going to talk about some other forms of new technology that we've been using here in the department, in the Engineering and Operations Department. And the first one is diesel. Now, you might be surprised to hear that there's new technology in diesel, because it's been around for a long time, but we burn a lot of this stuff. So, our heavy equipment, dump trucks, especially the VAC trucks that you see in the picture, use a lot of diesel to do the work that we do. And several years ago, well, actually, since I've been here, probably 10 years ago, the district has been interested in using, you know, sustainable solutions for a lot of different things, and diesel is one of them. So, we, for a long time, were using biodiesel. And biodiesel has matured, you know, throughout the years, and now there's actually a new form of what's called renewable diesel. It's similar to biodiesel. It uses the same root materials, if you will, of biomass, but it's refined differently. And what it does is it creates actually a better product, so it's cleaner than the biodiesel, and we've been using that very successfully for the last few years, and we just wanted to talk about that a little bit. So, it's got a lot of qualities to it. It's chemically indistinguishable from fossil diesels, and so they can be mixed together, and that's really important, so you don't have to have a separate, you know, tank to hold this stuff. It has lower emissions, and it actually has some better performance in the vehicles, and also some benefits on the maintenance side, so we thought this was a pretty good product. And actually, I've got a demo here to show that this, you can see how this burns. So, on the left, you have the renewable diesel, and on the right is your standard dinosaur-derived diesel, and just a demonstration of how that is a cleaner burning product, and it's been very successful for us. Any questions on diesel? The next thing we want to talk about—
I have a question, sorry.
Go ahead.
Does it, one time, when we first started looking at biodiesel, there was a problem with it and emergency generators—
Yeah.
—that had deteriorated with time. Does this new diesel solve that problem?
It does, yeah. We can successfully use this in the generators, and yeah, what Commissioner Doane is referring to was, the biodiesel can have actually water in it, and just the composition of that diesel material can be hard on some of the rubber internal components, and so we had some challenges with that, and we've solved that issue and some others with the renewable.
Also, do you need to add anticoagulant to it in cold weather?
So, you've just exhausted my knowledge of diesel, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
But that's a great question.
Thank you.
We can check on that. Okay. So, the next one I want to talk about is something that we've done recently, that we tried out with, inspecting inside our reservoirs. And this is something we've been doing for a while, and actually, it's led to spending a lot of money on fixing reservoirs, once we started focusing on the roofs of these structures. But it's very challenging to actually get a good look at the underside of the roof of a structure that's 30 or 40 feet tall. To get inside a reservoir, obviously, typically, you would drain that, and so then you're a long ways away from the roof. So, one of the things that we've done, and we've done this successfully as well, but you can float in boats. You can fill it up with water and clean off a boat with, and disinfect it and everything, and actually float on the surface of the water, and it gets you close to that, but there are some challenges with that. The other option is drain the tank, as you can see in the picture on the right-hand side, and set up scaffolding or ladders, but then you're working at heights, and you've got some other challenges with that. So, we came up with something new, and what you see here in the picture is a drone, again, and we're inside the empty tank, and we're going to use that to fly up and look at the bottom of that and actually document the condition. So, now, this is a little unique. Most drones that are used for photography look down, and we had to figure out a way to look up, and that's not very easy to do, and the way that these things fly, they're much more stable with weight below them than they are with weight perched on top. But we worked with a commercial drone operator, and he actually modified one of his machines with a light, you can see there on the front of it, and then also a camera that's actually out of its housing for this photo, but he was able to mount that on the top of the drone. And in this particular tank, we divided the area into a grid that you can see sketched on the right-hand side, and then he just manually flew a pattern through that grid, and his camera was set to take a photograph every second. And so, he just flew a smooth pattern through there, recorded all those photographs, and then we were able to tie them back to the grid, so that if we saw something of interest, we would know which region of the tank it was in. We'll show you what that process looked like. So, this is inside of our Florence Lane tank. There's actually two tanks there, and this is the south tank, and so we've had that drained down and did this operation. It's a 2-million-gallon steel reservoir. What we're interested in here is the condition of the coating. Since it's a steel reservoir, it's really important that that coating's in good shape to protect the steel from corrosion, and so we wanted to get a really good look at that and figure out if we needed to do some maintenance work on that. The good news is, as you can see, it's in good shape. There's not a lot of corrosion in this tank, and we've got a lot of time before we're going to have to take action here to recoat that. The sound, that's a little bit annoying, is it's difficult to hear anything inside these reservoirs. If you're speaking, even in a normal voice, it echoes to the point where it's very hard to communicate, so we used ear protection. Obviously, we had hard hats on to deal with some of those risks. Any questions on this so far?
Pete, how long did it take to complete?
That's a good question. So, we flew, or the operator flew, for about four hours, and I'll tell you, watching him do that, and in manual mode, that was an intense operation. Typically, if we were doing this outside, he would dial in a grid into his computer, and his drone would be automated, and it would fly with GPS. That doesn't work inside a steel tank, so he was on the controls that whole time.
Is he ever willing to come back and do the others?
Yeah, yeah, no, and that was—
Very entrepreneurial.
This was, so, fast forward to our lessons learned, because this was a successful operation. I mean, it was truly, you know, us, so the operator and myself, talking about this, and how can we do this, and what's going to work, and what do we, and it came down to, well, let's try it. We're not sure. And it was, it was successful. We had some, you know, good results. The photo quality is, I'll say, decent. You know, it's not high resolution like we could with a still camera getting up close. I mean, the motion of the drone, you know, makes that a little bit challenging. Some of the photos came out a little bit blurry, but we got a really good first look. You know, it gives us enough information to know that if, do we need to take a closer look and do an actual, you know, scaffolding setup and really get into it? But the bottom line is, there's no substitute for that. You know, really getting up close to the surface and getting your hands on things and checking with our own eyes is the ultimate solution. Now, we were able to see that this tank's in decent condition and will be for a while, and so we were pleased.
Are, is the district going to invest in drones? Are we going to continue to have a contractor do that?
So, yeah, let Carrie answer that question.
We, again, as Pete mentioned, that this was a pilot project to see how effective it was.
No pun intended.
You know, I didn't even think about it, but yeah, no pun intended. And at this point, we don't have plans to invest in drones in district for now. We think there are actually better uses for drones for, we talked about when we were doing some tour work, when we do the alignment studies. We think that we're going to start using consultants to fly the alignments for different areas that, you know, the pipeline alignment selection, alternative selection process, because in areas, we can't really walk everything, you know, behind the scene, behind the easements and behind houses and whatnot. If we are able to fly it with the drone from an aerial view, that, in the methods that the drones were originally meant to be used, like Pete mentioned earlier, you know, if the drones are looking down, we get a lot more higher-quality resolution, higher resolution quality pictures, that we can do some additional analysis without actually deploying people out to the field right away. So, we think there are better uses for these, but we haven't completely come to a place where we think it's important for us to have it in-house. We feel that there are enough expertise out in the field, private sector so far. We can also access SDAO's free services if we need it, so we're not looking to invest in on in-house drone force at this point.
Right. I just want to point out that I'm involved in dam safety, and there are double-curved dams, and you can't get to those places without a drone, because if you drop down from the deck, the dam is curving in, and you can be 20 feet away. Otherwise, you have to scaffold all the way up, and I just think that drone use is limited only by our imagination. And so, anyway, but I'm very happy to see that we're advancing with technology, and just like we don't design pipelines the way that Portland did. And I wasn't there in 2004, or in 1904, but, you know, this is a new way to inspect things, and I think it adds to the safety. Our employees aren't floating around in these things in rubber boats or climbing on scaffolding, so anything that reduces risk and anything that makes things happen faster, I want to encourage.
And that, all those points are very well taken.
I think we'll stop short of the flamethrower option, though, if we do decide to.
Oh, I don't know. You know, I'm sure we could put together a plausible reason.
Don't rule it out. Are there other questions for Pete?
Yeah. If there are no other questions, that concludes the CEO and management staff report this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Moving to Commissioner Communications, reports of meetings attended. Commissioner Sanders, would you like to start?
Thank you. On March 4, I attended the Willamette River Water Coalition Quarterly Meeting. On the 5, then we turned around and joined everybody for executive session on our usual first Tuesday of the month to talk CEO recruitment. Then on the 14, all of you and myself met with the Hillsborough Utility Commission folks for a WWSS update. And then, on the 19, I attended the Key Customers Breakfast, which, the food was okay, but the information that the key customers brought was really informative for me. That was to see how important real-time use is to them. I was a little taken back by, I was surprised, but they're really, when they're offering to help pay for it, there's something there, and that's pretty amazing, so I'm sure everybody will follow up with that, but it definitely caught my attention. And then, tonight's board meeting.
Moving to Commissioner Schmidt.
All righty. On the 5, I had a meeting with Mark and Bernice to discuss the agenda for this evening, and on the 5, I attended the work session also that talked about board goals, updates, and financial plan. And on the 14, I attended the Hillsborough Utility Commission, Tuauton Valley Water District Annual Get Together, and tonight's regular board meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Doane?
On the 28th of February, I went on the facility tour with most of the members of the Budget Commission, Budget Committee. Work session on March 5, the joint meeting with the Hillsborough Utility Commission on the 14, and then tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Duggan?
On the 26th of February, I attended a Finance Committee meeting, where we went over the Bardon Bond Ordinance and some things that are on tonight's agenda. On the 28, I also attended the TVWD Budget Tour with the Budget Committee and got to see all our great facilities and all the plans for coming year. On the 5 of March, I, by telephone, attended the TVWD Executive Session to discuss our CEO recruitment process. On the 12 of March, I had a meeting with staff to prepare me for a day in Salem to visit our state legislature and meet with the representatives and senators. Unfortunately, I was supposed to have attended yesterday, the actual day that I was preparing for last Tuesday, that was canceled and rescheduled for later in April, and it looks like I have a conflict later in April, and I won't be able to attend that. But I did want to express my thanks to staff for getting me well-prepared to go down to Salem and maybe sound half-intelligent. Thank you, Bernice. On the 14, I attended the TVWD Hillsborough Annual Meeting that we had here, and then tonight's meetings, and that's it.
Well, I had a bunch of meetings this past month, as Commissioner Duggan indicated. On February 26, we had the Finance Committee meeting to discuss the bond resolution and the financial policies. February 28, I went on the facilities tour, that's always a good time. We even had spectator snow. On the 5 of March, we had the board work session and executive session. We were discussing board goals and financial scenarios, as well as the CEO recruitment. On the 14 of March, I had a meeting with the CEO and Commissioner Schmidt to do agenda planning, and that same evening, we had an executive session for leadership planning, and we had the joint meeting with the Hillsborough Utilities Commission. So, that was a full day. On the 18 of March, I had a meeting with the CEO of Clean Water Services, and our CEO, to discuss the Clean Water Institute and what the purpose of that entity is and what our future relationship with them will be or not be. And then, of course, tonight's meeting. So, having dispensed with that, do we have any, are there any topics that commissioners wish to raise? Hearing none, we move to public comment, and this is a time set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the regular agenda. Additional public comment will also be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons who would like to comment? There are none at this time. We will move to the first item of the evening of business, is a public hearing, item 1A. Consider approving a motion to read by title only the draft ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement to form the Willamette Water Supply System Commission, an intergovernmental entity formed under ORS Chapter 190 between Tuauton Valley Water District and the cities of Hillsborough and Beaverton, and receive oral testimony or written comments, and direct that the ordinance be brought back for a second reading and adoption at the April 17, 2019 board meeting. First, we will hear, this is quite a process, first, we will hear the staff report, and then the board will consider reading the draft ordinance by title only. Next, I will open the public hearing, and anyone who wishes to offer testimony in support or opposition of this item will be given five minutes unless an extension is granted by the board. Should three or more people testify on the same topic, each person would be limited to three minutes. Following public testimony, I will close the hearing, and then the board will consider action on the item. So, there you have it, the whole process. We'll now have the staff report by Clark Balfour.
Thank you, President Bagnall and Commissioners. So, tonight is the first reading of the ordinance for adoption of the Willamette Water Supply Intergovernmental Agreement, which will create the Willamette Water Supply Commission, a intergovernmental entity consisting of Hillsborough, Tuauton Valley Water, and Beaverton that's allowed under Chapter 190 of the statutes. This is something that we've discussed before in work sessions and other presentations to the board, and so now we're coming to you with the, an agreement, which, there are still a few changes to be made, but staff feels that the agreement is in final form, subject to perhaps insignificant edits, but that it's in final form, ready for you to consider and adopt over a two-hearing and reading process. So, once again, for folks at home or folks in the audience, certainly you've seen this quite a bit, what is it that we're talking about with the Willamette Water Supply System? It is, it is the next step, once you leave, the whiff. And if you recall, this board approved nearly a year ago, the Willamette Intake Facilities Commission, which is another intergovernmental entity with six parties to operate the intake at the treatment plant site in Wilsonville, to draw water from the river, and then convey it to the service territories of Tuauton Valley, Hillsborough, and Beaverton. So, certain defined terms, but essentially, it breaks down to, from the intake, it's the raw water pipeline to the treatment plant, the new water treatment plant in the Sherwood area, the finished water pipeline from the treatment plant to our terminal storage reservoirs up on South Cooper Mountain, and then from those storage reservoirs, transmission pipelines, to Highway 26, essentially following Carnegie's Pass Road. And at various points along the way on the pipeline, there will be what we call turnouts or points of delivery where that— or points of delivery where that is the access point for Willamette Water to access the distribution systems of the various parties. So once again, what's the purpose of this entity? Own, fund, design, construct, operate, maintain, repair, replace, and if necessary, hopefully many decades in the future, expand the system if needed. But this is an entity that will essentially provide the full-meal deal to operate this water system for the benefit of Tuauton Valley and its neighbors. So there are some major concepts, there's a lot of concepts in here, believe me, but there are some major concepts that we should emphasize. So number one, it is creating a commission, which will mean that one of you, you will need to appoint one of you to be your representative to this new entity, as well as an alternate. So each entity then will vote according to its ownership interest in the pipeline. We have an approval process that requires 70% of the eligible voting percentage to pass something. But there are four areas where we require unanimous votes. And you'll see that down at the bottom of the slide. Unanimous vote would be to admit the entry of a new member, to authorize the commission itself to issue debt, or to amend the agreement or to dissolve the agreement. In all other cases, it's going to be a 70% requirement, and with certain core requirements depending on the type of vote to be made. Now, how is that percentage vote calculated? As I said, it's based on the capacity ownership interest that each entity has in the raw water pipeline and finished water pipeline. And if you look at that chart up there, which comes out of the agreement, Tuauton Valley will have 58.9% of the vote, Hillsborough will be at 36.09, and Beaverton will be at 4.98. So as you can see, it essentially requires the parties to cooperate to pass a, an item, except in that unanimous situation. Now, the voting percentages could be changed if there's a rerating of the system. And what is rerating? That's going to be a board-approved or commission-approved process and commission-adopted findings that allocate or re-rate the capacity of an entity, of a component, depending upon the operational changes. So the fact is, is that any change in that weighted voting system is going to require your consent, your consent as an individual board. Another key point is, is that Tuauton Valley is going to be appointed as the managing agency, which is a continuation of what we've been doing since 2015, and actually even before 2015. But in 2015, we entered into an agreement with Hillsborough where Tuauton Valley would be the managing agency for the program to date. What this agreement's going to do is to supplant that 2015 agreement and carry forward TVWD as the managing agency. And once again, it will manage the WWSP to, Dave Kraskas' group, the WWSP, to construct the system, have it online by 2026. And at that point, we're going to be into that operations, maintenance, repair, replacement mode. And post-2026, we will supervise Hillsborough as the operator of the new treatment plant, and of course, will provide all the other services, transmission, storage, and overall administration of the system. So with that, I would entertain questions that you might have.
Well, as Clark mentioned at the beginning, the board has seen this many, many times. This has been quite an evolving process, and we've spent a lot of work session time on it. But do board members have any questions they'd like to raise this evening? Okay. In that case, do I have a motion and a second to read by title only the draft ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement to form the Willamette Water Supply System Commission, an intergovernmental entity formed under ORS Chapter 190 between Tuauton Valley Water District and the cities of Hillsborough and Beaverton? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, a motion, we did, sorry.
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Doan?
Second.
All right. Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. I would like to invite staff to read the ordinance title into the record.
Thank you. Ordinance Number 01-19, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement to form the Willamette Water Supply System Commission, an intergovernmental entity formed under ORS Chapter 190 between Tuauton Valley Water District and the cities of Hillsborough and Beaverton.
Thank you. I am now opening the public hearing on Item 1A. Is there anyone wishing to comment on that ordinance? Any testimony in support or opposition? Seeing none, the public hearing on 1A is now closed. Do I have a motion to direct staff to bring back the ordinance for a second reading and adoption at the April 17, 2019 board meeting?
I move.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Moving to Item 1B on the agenda, we have another public hearing. In this one, we are considering approving a motion to read by title only the draft ordinance of the Tuauton Valley Water District, Oregon, authorizing the issuance of water revenue bonds, and receive oral testimony or written comments and direct that the ordinance be brought back for a second reading and adoption at the April 17, 2019 board meeting. As with the prior public hearing, first we'll hear the staff report, then the board will consider reading the draft ordinance by title only, and after that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to offer testimony will be given five minutes unless an extension is granted by the board. And if three or more people testify on the same issue, they'll get three minutes apiece. So we will move now to the staff report by Paul Matthews.
Good evening, President Bagnall, Commissioners. This is an exciting moment for Tuauton Valley Water District as we move into the next phase of the Willamette Water Supply System, which is to finance it. And as we've talked before, the district has received eligibility to apply for a loan with the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act of 2014, WIFI as we call it, which will literally save our customers hundreds of millions of dollars. To do that, we need to have authorization within this ordinance to issue that debt. And that's what I'll be talking about tonight. So it really is a big step for us. I'll talk about the steps that we need to go through in order to access the WIFI loan and to issue our debt in general, the long-term debt program. I'll talk about the timing of those steps. I'll highlight some of the key provisions of Ordinance 02-19, that is the subject for our conversation here, and then I'll provide a recommendation. So the key steps that we have in terms of moving forward with our debt program, there are three things that we need to do. Two of them are going to be doing here tonight. First will be the adoption of our financial management policies, and we'll do that in the regular meeting after we've completed this public hearing. That'll be another agenda item. The second one listed here is the adoption of the bond ordinance, and that is what authorizes the district then to borrow the funds, both from the WIFI program as well as, as necessary, other revenue bonds to fund the entire program. It'll allow us to fund all the district's capital expenditure needs within the district's CIP, as well as the various joint ventures that we're investing in. The third item, which we'll bring to the board in May, is the approval of the master revenue bond declaration. That's the item that actually creates the pledge to the bondholders of, that we will repay them in certain requirements that the district will undertake to repay those. So we have three steps that we're talking about here, or three particular asks of the board. The first is tonight, which will be the first reading of the bond ordinance and the adoption of the financial management policies that I described. We'll come back in April for the second reading, and then 30 days later, that ordinance, if you adopt it, will be effective. In May, we will also then present the, a resolution approving the master revenue bond declaration. We talk about revenue bonds, that's the way it's described under Oregon law, but these are also the steps that are required for the WIFI loan itself. So key provisions of the bond ordinance that we're talking about, first, it authorizes the borrowing. It authorizes $600 million of borrowing for the capital expenditures of the district, and that includes investment in the joint ventures. It is a special obligation of the district, meaning that it is not a general obligation borrowing, rather that we will pay this from what we'll describe as the net revenues, but we'll pay it from water rates. That's how we'll repay this obligation. It allows for refunding. This will allow the district to refund its debt in the future if need be, and in fact, even borrow in the short-term market and save even more money if interest rates are favorable in that regard. It delegates to staff certain responsibilities to effect the WIFI loan and to issue the debt. It has a reimbursement declaration, which we have here at the district already, but as our bond council has explained to us, we can't have too many declarations we intend to reimburse ourselves. What this allows us to do is to take bond proceeds and replace some of the cash that we're spending now so we can maintain our cash balances. That actually helps us with our credit rating to show that we have liquidity, the cash on hand. So that's an important feature of this as well. It's not an emergency ordinance, meaning that unless it's referred, it's effective 30 days after enactment. The Finance Committee has been busy looking over these documents and has, in fact, looked over this particular document. The Finance Committee recommended including a requirement for an asset management plan in the financial management policies that we'll be talking about later this evening, rather than a renewal and replacement study, which had been the district's practice in its last bond offering. So with that, staff recommends approve by motion to read by title only Draft Ordinance 02-19.
And I would just like to add to Paul's remarks that it probably goes without saying, but I'm going to say it, the city of Hillsborough is going through exactly these three steps so that they will also have their financing in place before we need it. Are there questions of Paul? Then do I have a motion and a second to read by title only the draft ordinance of the Tuauton Valley Water District, Oregon, authorizing the issuance of water revenue bonds?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. I'd like to invite staff to read the ordinance title into the record.
Ordinance Number 02-19, an ordinance of the Tuauton Valley Water District, Oregon, authorizing the issuance of water revenue bonds.
Thank you. I am now opening the public hearing on Item 1B. Do we have anybody that wants to testify in support or in opposition? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion to direct staff to bring back the ordinance for a second reading and adoption at the April 17, 2019 board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Now that we've gotten through these public hearings, we'll move back to the regular agenda, the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed, excuse me, removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. We have three items on tonight's consent agenda, the February 20 regular meeting minutes, the March 5 work session minutes, and we have an item to approve the time spent by the CEO to attend the American Water Works Association Annual Conference and Exhibition in Denver, Colorado as compensable time to accept an award, by the way. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent?